I need to check off what we've got and I would like you to be there so I mean I know tense. Yeah, a long time. Did you bring in the stylist and all that other stuff today? But we're signing.
All right, so I'm gonna call meeting order if everyone please do have any questions.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is the consent agenda, is there any member that would like to remove any items from the consent agenda?
Yours.
I would like to request to have the Barnes and Thornburg consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Minus the jail project one?
So do.
Motion by Paul Ryder. Is there a second? Second by Scott Ayers, is there any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, both same side. Motion carries. Just, uh, standing on three six zero and putting for the record that Dr. Stoppard.
Okay.
Eddie? Uh, so the next item would be the jail project transfer. Uh, I just heard from Barnes and Thornburg, um, I was unclear as to, and there were several members that had asked questions about this. Um, he's, uh, Rick indicated that he would send us the contract, so we'll clarify that and I would recommend we table that for the next meeting. Yeah, we can question. Um, can I get a motion to table at the next meeting?
Still move.
Motion to table. Due to April meeting, made by Tim Radcliffe, seconded by Tracy Martin. All those, uh, new discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, both same side. Motion carries. There you go. All right, just have the record that Dr. Stoppard, going to ten oh five. We'll be here for the next meeting. Financial. Thanks for the hand deal document. The, uh, total budget utilization year to date is eighteen percent, or sixteen point, uh, six seven percent through the year. Um, revenues appear to be online. Uh, the, the reason that that budget figure is high is there's, uh, the, the transfer to ring day is sitting in the commissioner's budget as a, uh, I guess, what's the word for that? A fee without appropriation, I don't remember what that, that's called. So that looks like six hundred thousand dollars budget utilization. But that was just an error. Uh, other than that, uh, seems like every department is in good order. Anybody else have any high level budget update that they'd like to discuss? No, we'll just go around for, uh, department updates. Just start us off.
Yeah, I'll just jump in. So, uh, no concerns on any of the departments, um, that I partner with. Um, just real quickly, the auditor's at thirteen point three percent, uh, overall percentage budget utilized. Uh, council's at five point five. Uh, the commissioners are at thirty two percent, which is a bit high, but there are some outliers there. I, I don't really have any concerns. Um, nine one one, the eleven seventy two is at twelve, and then statewide, nine one one, uh, the twelve twenty two is at sixteen point six. So, uh, no red flags or anything that I feel like needs to be brought up, uh, as a concern.
Chris?
It's gonna make my needs to be minor, all under fifteen percent, and I was about you know, I don't have anything to do now.
No?
I don't have anything to bring up.
All right.
And I'm in, Chris, no concerns?
None?
Sheriff, uh, so sheriff jail and animal control, um, at thirteen point two to ten point three seven and fourteen point two respectively. Um, the sheriff had, um, you know, forty three thousand dollar and change transferred today for that, uh, building, uh, pipe, uh, sewer pipe issue that he dealt with. Uh, so we should anticipate that that will go up here in the future for the jail. Uh, sheriff also, any of these have had a maintenance issue on one of his vehicles. It was pretty expensive, so he has some concern there, but, uh, we should be able to stay on track and just balancing that out for the rest of the year. EMS sits at fourteen point two four percent and adult probation at twelve point four three, and that could run the report there. Anything else for financial up things? All right, we'll go on to the auditor.
Last time that we met, I had a final bill from Jack Kraus, but I got another one, um, saying that he didn't realize that that one had not been filed. And what had happened was, he did file it, but then he said to wait on it, he said all, everything was closed, that this were going to be in and everything. So then after all, what happened in December, he sent me this other bill. So this is the final bill. It is, um, who says it's part of his, uh, contract, I don't know. But I gave you a copy of the breakdown of what it is. Josh had asked me, but then letting know, our servers are down, so I couldn't get on here, so I took this off of his billing. So that's his, his copies, not mine, so.
So these are just Jack's payments?
Jack's payments, and that's what he says he received, what he billed, what he received, and what it is for, like document printing, reimbursables, and pre instruction. So, down at the bottom is what he has received, I just said total, so I don't know. That's his spreadsheet, not mine.
So what's the number on the final bill?
Sixty seven fifty four seventy six, that last figure that's on here.
Well, I see it, okay.
And his billing's from February through November. I feel like that should be September through November.
So, um, I'll, I'll talk on this since we discussed this at the last meeting. My concern was that, uh, my recollection of the contract with CCI was that his pre-construction services will have to receive fifty thousand dollars, school billing to her fifty three thousand, seven forty nineteen. Um, I would, I would like for, um, our council as well as the commissioner's council to, I, I would recommend that the council pass a motion requesting that those, that those two communicate, um, are, should find out if it is appropriate to spend that additional thirty seven hundred dollars and change, if we're beyond what the original scope of the contract was. From my recollection.
So, that's, that's from your recollection. Have you looked at the contract as it was submitted to see if there's verbiage in there?
I pulled up my contracts and I had multiple iterations, um, from my, in my personal records, so I didn't want to speak to it. But my, the one that I looked at, I thought was pretty clear, it was fifty thousand, but I have six, literally six copies of it, so I, and I didn't get the executed copy from Beth, that was, I should have requested that. Um, that would be my recommendation, and then I guess we could, uh, we could also have a motion that if, if they deem that it is within the scope of the contract, that we could authorize the payment, that would be either part of that motion or second motion.
I would like to move that we pay the, uh, the amount that is up to the fifty thousand.
I'm gonna write this.
Remaining balance be pending council review of the contract.
So you would like to have it pushed back to next year? I mean, excuse me, um, for any further action, wait until our next council meeting?
No, I'm saying that, uh, this sixty seven fifty four seventy six exceeds the fifty thousand dollars by, what, thirty seven hundred dollars or, or something to that effect?
Right.
My, my motion would be, or my recommendation would be that we pay up to the fifty thousand now.
I see.
Um, and then anything exceeding the fifty thousand, uh, we hold on to pending council review of the contract.
So that would be our next meeting? Okay, all right.
Do, do any of you have December's, um, reports with you?
I do.
If you would look in that budget, that was, um, what it started out to be, for Jack, or the, for construction control, that is what we have accrued to pay, unless they were doing it out at one time, I don't know, I'm just, I'm just trying to correct things on, I'm just guessing, the office or why.
Um, recently, that, that motion of contract.
I don't understand what you're trying to say.
If you, do you have December, um, and CY what, in twenty three oh six, how much was appropriated in there that line? Just, I do know that I, um, it's a roll over, that we rolled over, what's left in that account is thirteen eighteen nineteen. Okay, do you have a motion? Was there a second to this motion? Okay.
Uh, so, so, all right, so I have a motion by Tim Radcliffe, seconded by Paul Ryder, to pay three thousand seven hundred forty dollars nineteen cents now, and then, or, on the balance of the last invoice, um, and we would ask that our council reach out to commissioner's council to, uh, get that.
How much was that?
Three thousand seven.
I thought, I thought the motion would.
Oh, excuse me, excuse me, that's the overage. Two, I apologize.
I was telling you that you have thirteen eighteen nineteen left in that line, I am there. That's all that's in there right now.
So we, we can't.
You would be able to make money.
I thought you were saying thirteen thousand, I'm sorry.
What is the forty nine thousand six hundred, what we paid thus far?
That's what it looks like to me, if you're saying you only owe him fifty, I don't understand what that would be.
Say what? So the, the, the bill is, he built it in four columns, pre-construction, forty nine thousand eight hundred, and then he's taking thirty six thirteen of document printing and five hundred thousand six dollars of reimbursables totaling that over seven. So, and this is, this is my question, I mean, this is, the way that he's do, has billed this, the, the total is less than fifty thousand dollars, but he's asking for an additional, you know, thirty seven hundred and some dollars in the document printing and the reimbursables. But, but from, I mean, that's why I'd like the council to look at it, because from my perception, the total, regardless of how we broke it out, was fifty thousand. Uh, but, you know, I could be wrong in that split.
And you believe the contract price was at fifty for the most recent contract?
I believe it was, but that's.
So I'll find out if that is in fact the case, and check for any amendments, anything like that.
And, and so I guess our question would be then, uh, can we also, or can CCI also bill for document printing and reimbursables, or is that all in the pre-construction?
Okay, I'll, I'll take a look at the language and whatever the most current contract is.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, so, we only have thirteen hundred dollars in line, is that correct though?
So, okay, I remember, I looked all my.
Okay.
Plus it would be over the fifty at the original, if they can't get the others, so that's why I was wondering why we were.
Thank you.
So we can table this till the next meeting?
Shouldn't we go back to our commission motion?
Which I forget.
Well, we just table it until, would you like?
Okay, yeah, so, would you like to remake that motion?
I would like to table it.
We have a motion to table to the April meeting, um.
I'll second.
Seconded, is that you?
Yes.
Seconded by Ethan Brown. Any discussion for this motion to table? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right.
Is it service? I put service pros because that's what it says on here, is surface pros, that what you checked out, person that typed this out, they're not. We know what you're signing out, but I need Ethan to sign out later, I don't believe I have a sign. I do, we did mine here today, but I don't have one for Ethan. So, you receive the service pro and a charger.
Okay.
The other is that you need to turn in what is listed on here, what you checked out. So if you will check with me after the meeting, we will look at these, your sis. So, I know Tim has already done her, his, Tracy I think has a couple, another thing to turn in, and even has, um, business pros, but there's still stuff lying there, so we just need to look at it, okay? Look at it. The other is appointments to the PETA Board, um, the assessor has asked that Jim Malati or Malady and Judy Lewis, um, be appointed to the PETA Board, um, Jim is a licensed real estate praiser, and Judy Lewis is a level two certified Indiana assessor praiser, which is required by law.
Is our motion? Move to the group? Seconded by Scott Ayers to approve, seconded by Ethan Brown, any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, both same side. Motion carries.
That's it for me.
The next item on the agenda is the office manager, the office, excuse me. Oh, yes, I, thanks, thanks for reminding me. Uh, Judge, uh.
Good morning, thanks everybody for counting my schedule. Uh, we got some people upstairs, Judge Neener is neck deep in Title Four D stuff, so otherwise he would be down there. But, uh, can we do the grant proposal first?
Sure.
So the grant proposal, uh, application process has been approved by the commissioners, it's been funded by the Indiana Office of Court Services, an amount of twenty five thousand dollars, specifically for, uh, the, the way the grant was written was for kiosks to be placed, uh, different places throughout the county. Um, the community corrections director, executive director and I have met with, uh, one provider, uh, one vendor rather, of, of a particular kiosk that we're really interested in, and so we're trying to present a plan that will use that twenty five thousand dollars. It's a reimbursement grant, uh, it's not a matching grant, so there's no cost, uh, or additional cost to the, to the county. Um, the intent is to place kiosks that will allow access to the court throughout the county, uh, for people who may have a difficult time getting here. My thinking is, one, and part of the thing we're working on now with the vendors is to make sure, one, there is little to no recurring cost year over year, or it's something we can absorb in the budget with software maintenance, et cetera. Um, right now, the one that we like the most, uh, has no recurring expense other than the monthly expense, and the contract will be terminated at any time with a thirty day notice, um, but it's fairly expensive, so we've got to figure out how, uh, if we don't have grant funding, how we continue to pay for it. Uh, the benefit of that particular one is, one, it does alcohol monitoring, um, it will allow probation officers to not have to meet with low level offenders, um, and it will also allow, I talked to the jail commander yesterday, little did the sheriff know, um, that it will allow sex offenders, uh, who were required to register to meet and check in, it's on video, it has a thumbprint, and the jail commander was pretty ecstatic about that because it will relieve some of her duties, uh, if there's a problem. So there's a lot of other opportunities, uh, there, one of the things, we want to make sure that they can process payments, um, and that somebody comes and picks them up. Uh, so that's one of the things that we're looking at. So, we're not prepared, uh, at this point to purchase any, we still have two other vendors that we're interested in. The others would be, uh, in, in theory would be on, like in Burlington, uh, where it's far from the courthouse, where somebody can go make a payment, somebody can go pay a traffic ticket, somebody can appear via Zoom on court, um, and so we want to do that. One, hopefully collect money. Um, those kiosks have enough front costs, um, but then we've got to figure out what the residual, uh, cost would be for those month over, year over year. Um, and I don't have the report for that because we haven't got the vendors yet, after getting notice that the grant was approved. So, what I'm asking, uh, council is to, uh, fund the, the twenty five thousand dollars as it was advertised, and then, um, you'll be able to move forward.
What's Tim? Kiosk, we're talking about the formal office, what is a kiosk?
Been in airport recently?
Yeah.
Okay, so you know when now they want you to check in on the kiosk, you touch here, here, print, bag prints out, you don't have to talk to a human being, it's that sort of thing. So, one, um, the kiosk, there are all kinds of things, they're used in, uh, a lot of courts, um, but the primary goal is they can go and swipe a credit card and make a payment on their case, uh, and they can do that, you know, anytime that the, the kiosk is open or available, so if it's in a public place, which is one of the other things we've got to deal with, is where do we put it, how do we secure it? Um, they all have cameras on them, but the last thing I want is damage on those particular pieces of machinery. Um, so, they'd be able to do that when they come and check in in court, uh, when we've got, you know, thirty or thirty five people up there, they can check in there, they can check in with probation, uh, somebody gets queued it up to say, these are the documents you need to sign and bring into court with you, or your probation, they print to grab them, and, uh, you know, theory is it'll make it much more efficient for the process for everybody on the third floor and for the clerk's office, et cetera. So, they leave traffic court, here's your order type and your number, here's your payment, uh, and say people can go in there and cause an emergency, as this has happened recently. So, um, those, those are the kinds of things we're looking at, but, uh, for, but the other one is much more monitoring. So, uh, in the criminal world, we've got a new amended criminal rule twenty six, which is, uh, the pre-trial release stuff, you've probably heard about in cashless bail, um, that's optional, as currently written, but it's gaining teeth with case laws, it's coming down because it's new, and it's moving from optional to mandatory, um, and so that's going to affect jail population on pre-conviction part, but this allows us a way to monitor them that is not intrusive, since they're innocent until proven guilty. Uh, we can also monitor alcohol use, um, they can check in, and we don't have to, you know, um, burden an already existing employee, uh, to do things, you know, before we fill out the scope of that's going to be and how many we have, so to eliminate abuse for pre-contractions and eliminating use for probation, um, probation officers tell me their caseload is somewhere in the two hundred range, it probably should be eighty, um, some of those would be people who need to check in and just make a payment. Well, we don't need to waste man hours for that, they can check in there, and so if we reduce their caseload, they can. The other nice thing about this network is, uh, there are other counties in Indiana right now, there are two others, Shelby County and Marion County, uh, we say, um, you're on pre-trial release and I want you to go take a breath test, and you say, well, I'm in Indianapolis. We say, no problem, there's a kiosk over in Noblesville, no blow, you've got forty minutes to get there, and you can blow there, and the net, it's like ATMs, so any of those, any of those kiosks we can use, and so they're gaining ground, especially with community corrections, uh, so it's exciting, and we're kind of on the forefront for that, which is one of the reasons that the Office of, uh, Court Services funded the grant, was because they want counties to do that, and in the middle of, you know, COVID stuff, the less people interacting with other people.
How many kiosks do we throw down to have?
Uh, I think we can, in the grant, we can afford one, uh, it's thirteen hundred and fifty dollars a month, um, and their user fees associated with it, so we've got to do the analysis of how much revenue that will generate to offset that, but if we can use other departments, so for example, sheriff's offices utilizing it for sex offenders, DCS is using it to screen people before, uh, supervised visits, uh, the court is using for pre-trial services, probate, you know, so their, their fees built in, um, I don't think that'll be the cost for us, but it would be, I can't tell you what it is, because I don't know if they'll have a hundred use rate or fifty.
So we could start out with one?
Yes, yeah, because that would be funded for the year of the grant, and then community corrections, when they rewrite their grant, uh, based on what we saw, she wants to include that in hers, uh, so we could possibly get two that are funded via grant. Um, the other kiosk we would own, the other left, the other kiosks we would own, so we would own the, the kiosk, and we would be responsible for, so if I put one outside the courtroom, people check in on, that's our equipment. The thirteen hundred and fifty dollar a month one is theirs, they own it, they service it, the whole deal. And so if it breaks, somebody smashes it, they come and place it, um, we, we just pay a monthly fee and collect the revenue. So the alcohol test, we can charge four dollars for, the cost is three, uh, we can charge ten dollars, we can charge, you know, whatever, there's a check in fee, you know, whatever it may be, um, and so those things are built in there. So there'll be some revenue, but I can't tell you how much, we don't know, so the, one of the nice things is if we can, uh, do that with the grant funding and see where our utilization is, is it worth it, or, you know, it's not meant to make money, but if we can cover a cost, then it's a huge benefit, so.
Hopefully the grant being renewed.
We'll, we'll see, yeah, I mean, who knows what's going to happen, but, um, I, to be frank, I was surprised that it was, uh, funded, um, but I was happy that it was, it was the opportunity, some of the things that bigger counties would do.
Is there a contractual obligation?
Thirty days?
That's it?
Well, the, he sent me the contract and I'm not a time reviewer, there is a term of, uh, I, I, they remember same year, but there's a cancellation clause that requires thirty day notice at any time. So we get six months into it, and so we've used it seven times, we say, well, we're not going to, you know, we're not going to continue with this until we can cancel. So that's, uh, one of the things that we talked about in person, he came here from Minnesota to meet with us, um, it was, uh, informative and really kind of neat, uh, some of the things they could do, so.
So consumables, uh, assume that if you do a breathalyzer.
Straws are thirty five, or, excuse me, thirty five dollars for ten thousand straws.
It's increasing.
You know, but they're on video, and the video was, I mean, he showed us an example in the video, you can see from the head to the shoelaces, so you can see everything. So nobody can come in and blow for you, you know, there are a lot of other things, uh, and then, so then, if they, instead of having to report to probation to do a breath test or report to, uh, the sheriff's office, the only time they would, then after reports of law enforcement or a certified breath test would be if there's a positive blow, um, but he, he said there did indicate, because in the beginning there are a lot of positives and everybody goes, oh, fair, I'm messing around, and so then, you know, everybody kind of falls in line, uh, which is nice, which is what we're doing, so, but we got to figure out where to put it, and.
It's, it's down in the additional, so we just.
Oh, okay, all right, so you don't, I'm happy to answer you.
No, it was good to, to get up to the.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, no, sorry, I thought you were, I thought it required motion, so, so that's the, the.
We'll handle it.
Gotcha, so that's the deal with the, the key. Gotcha. So that's the deal with the kiosk, and we're working that in with some other things that we think may be coming down from court services. And so we've got, I believe to be in the year to spend that. So we're going to kind of wait to see what all happens with this next round of stimulus, because if there's, you know, who knows what we're going to get. So I don't want to spend something here when we could have done, you know.
I just want to clarify something. So we have enough money for one machine to lease it for a year?
Yeah, so it's sixteen thousand five hundred for a year, and we have twenty-five thousand. And that would, I think, would still allow us to put the other things in the courtroom for payments or downstairs. You know, for example, if we can afford it, we can put one downstairs someplace, or somebody can come in right on the first floor, pay their traffic ticket, pay their court cost, pay whatever it is, and not have to go to the clerk's office and, you know, whatever it is. And then you're not going to get messed up with online payments with Carroll County, Maryland, or Carroll County, Ohio, or wherever. So if somebody comes here from Maryland, they get payment, you know, in the building.
I think the most important thing is that we're moving forward. We need to do things like this. We need to stop being Carroll County, that there's always tangents behind.
There's, I hope to be back here soon to talk to you about some technology updates in the courtroom that I think will, will be astonishing to be able to do, that will rival other places and give our lawyers the ability to present a much more effective case, much more efficient. And it's exciting. There's some exciting things going on. Just figure out where the money comes from, right?
Do they have to come from Minnesota to fix it, or?
They do, but they've got Marion County, Shelby County, and the executive director reached out to those folks there and indicate there have been, you know, no issues that they haven't resolved quickly. They are looking at, eventually they'll put somebody here to cover this area. Because the biggest thing is that it also takes cash, and so somebody from them comes and collects the cash, cash collection. So there's some issues looking at getting those payments in from and to the auditor, where the money is. So whether that's daily or weekly, you know, so on and so forth.
I still have one question. I have doubts here. Why do we own someone and lease others?
So the one that does the alcohol system, they lease that. And right now, that's the only one we found on the market that does that. The others are literally just, somebody's designed these, they've built a software and a program, and they're utilized all over, and they just sell them and say, it's your, it's your, so.
So it's separate vendors?
Yeah, there are multiple vendors for the other ones, and there are all kinds of things. You could have a big one, you could have a small one, just a screen and a printer, fingerprint, credit card, no credit card, you can do any combination. And so we're just exploring what those options are in those, and to see where we can utilize those to best what, what money we have. We're really working towards the alcohol to see if we can utilize that efficiently for the county.
You just said maybe you do the auditor?
Where, I don't know.
Yeah, well, I, I've got me thinking, who, you say they collect the money?
They collect.
Or they get the reports, and then they send us a check, or, or how's that work?
I don't know the answer to that. We talked about that because that's one of the issues. Yeah, no, 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 that's one of the reasons that the cash option is not really, you know, a big deal. If we do the credit cards only, or debit cards or whatever, that's through pay.gov, and then that's an instant transfer and report cash, that no much cash is in there, based on how much.
That's what I'm saying, is who gets that report? Would it be the clerk? And then she sends it over here, going through the court system, financial, so we need to.
I can, I can, yeah, one, one, I'll find that out. I don't know.
I just want to know.
So that's one of the issues. Marion County wants it collected daily, Shelby County wants it collected weekly, and they don't care. And I said, I have no way of what, I don't know how much will.
Is it clear where it's going to be?
I'm sorry.
Do you know physically where it will be?
I got an idea. I'd really like to be in the sheriff's department, but he hasn't, we have not talked at all about this, so I'm kind of throwing my own bus. But someplace public, someplace.
And dealt by?
The initial one, yes. Because that's where the borders may be. If we find we can utilize it more, you know, if we can get one in Burlington or Flora, those would be ideal. But I, the majority of people are monitoring, mostly are, I think, courts usually do this here, so. And then the nice thing is we've been looking at, everyone's saying, well, we need to, you know, it just needs powered internet. This one can attach to the wall, or it's a self-standing. So, thanks for your work. You're welcome. Thank you, guys. So the next thing is less pleasant and exciting. Staffing issues. The job descriptions that I mentioned before were approved by the commissioners. There are two new job descriptions. One is a chief court reporter slash court administrator as a full-time employee. The second one is deputy court reporter. And then the existing jobs are there. Right now, between Judge Diener and me, we have six and a half employees, three and a half in Superior, three in Circuit. And we're down to one in Circuit and two in Superior. We posted the jobs that were existing because we're floundering, frankly. And the staff is at what it's in. So we got the new job descriptions approved. We're asking for funding to make that half person a whole, and then change the pay structure for all the employees in Circuit, Superior Court, those, those job descriptions, or, excuse me, those payrolls. So the salary organs, I don't know what we have to do to do that. That, I'm just presenting you where our issues are. So right now, we have bailiff, we have deputy court reporters, and then we have a chief court reporter. The salaries are sixteen something for the bailiff, seventeen oh seven, and then seventeen for the court, deputy court reporters, and then nineteen something for the chief court reporter. What we're asking is, and I'm guessing because it's mid-budget cycle, if approved, what we'd probably do is leave the employees where they're at until the next cycle, then we can rewrite it and move others into the joint court account for two reasons. One, the chief court reporter and court administrator, which is one person, would have dual duties for all the departments. We've been duplicating some services that one person can handle.
I don't know about you, but I am so confused right now. You, so you want to keep the position you have right now, or you're going to change all the positions?
The, yeah, one position will change, as it is now. So the part-time deputy court reporter in Superior Court, I'm asking to make that full-time. So that's question one. The deputy, the part-time deputy, not deputy, deputy court reporter, I'm asking to make that full-time.
So that's what his job description is?
Yes.
So it's part-time and a full-time. Well, I'm not sure commissioners do that. I don't mind. I'm not escaping the land.
Well, I guess, well, if that's a new position, that's fine. Then please eliminate my part-time position if you approve that one, I guess is the reality. So we created a new job description for a full-time person, for me to come here and ask you to make the part-time a full-time. If we have to delete, you know, or eliminate the part-time and approve this one, okay.
So this is a new position?
Yes. And if you approve that, I'm also asking you to eliminate the part-time positions.
So what positions do you want in the Superior Court?
Eventually, two, or three, two court reporters and bailiff.
So you're asking for this right now, or are you wanting this to be done at budget time? There's two different situations.
Well, I see, right. So what I'm thinking is, if we leave the job, leave the employees in the courts where they're at, leave three over there, leave the, make Superior Court go from three to four, leave Circuit. And then let's talk about the funding, the pay rates. The next, when the next budget cycle, as you and I will move some of those employees into the joint accounts, eliminating them from all of them. Because they'll be doing
Yeah, I'd like to do that. I think, this is very important. So what he's asking for, he has three point five employees now. He's asking that to turn him from that, so that point five we don't want. And that person is currently, or will be called, a deputy court reporter.
So you're going to do three half employees to four?
Right. And so, and then he is also asking for, he does not have a chief court reporter slash court administrator, which exists in the other court, Circuit Court. So they're just balancing those two jobs. So what he started to say was, the proposal is to move these employees from the court, or some of the employees from the individual courts into the joint courts, and that would be at budget time. But, and you can speak to the why on that. But today, if, whatever the council decides, or the action that's being requested is the approval of the deputy court reporter, job description, their status and budget requirements to be a full-time employee, and the approval of the pay and job description of the role of chief court reporter.
Right, that's exactly right.
Why are we changing?
Well, all, eventually all of them.
Right now.
The request is all of them. So, and for the chief court reporter slash court administrator, that would replace one of the three in Circuit Courts, because it's already funded. Deputy, the corporate court position that's there, that will be the chief court reporter spot. So it's just replacing that. And then we'll move her into, to joint courts at the next budget cycle.
These are joint courts. The job description actually says joint courts. So if you're not going to have it in joint courts, that really should be the court that it's going to be in.
Then we can put them, I don't care where you guys put them. I, we, we control both of them. I, we don't care.
But the thing is, it's middle of budgets time, and you can't move one monies from department to another department. I mean, I can check that out, but I've never been able to do that before.
It is in some of the same fund, it would be a fund, it would just be.
No, but it's department to department. It's like me helping tow with animal control or something like that. I don't know. I like dogs.
So.
I don't know. I, I don't know. I would have to check that out. I didn't realize that, and I didn't realize that this was a brand new position.
I think we need to table this in what it is.
And I'm sorry.
That's okay. Here's, so let me share some other information. And, you know, table and I soon to the next meeting. We have three staff people. We're a month out on orders. And we're to the point where one of my staff persons told me this morning, Judge, I'm tired. And we are just piling more and more on. We advertise the jobs that we have. We have one applicant for the, for two bailiff spots, one. And then after presented with the benefits package declined. We have zero qualified applicants for three court reporter positions. Zero.
The thing you could do is maybe amend it. I mean, you know, a prism with amendment, but it goes to the right court for now.
Yeah, and, you know, that's my fault and for not understanding the process, I guess. Our intent eventually is, at the next budget cycle, is to move those joint employees into a joint account because Judge Diener and I are going to share it. And so the next judge who comes in can't, it'll be more difficult for somebody to manage if they wanted to, you know, clear the path. There's some stability, there's some longevity there, et cetera, et cetera. But I, I understand the technicality, so that's my fault, but we're.
Because you can also go on a wage on that.
Right. And the wages that were advertised for were not fruitful. And so we're at the point where we're going to have to close the court potentially, because we, I can't get orders out before the next year and the meeting.
And so in order not to close the court, to get some accomplished, if we, if we approve this job description with an amendment.
So that's the, well, let me ask you another question.
Go ahead.
So what's the biggest problem that needs fixed?
We need court reporters.
Okay, so what do we have?
No, you fix that.
Have we fixed that?
Well, I don't know whether it's going to be paid. I can tell you, our pay rate for our court reporters currently is thirty-three, thirty-four thousand dollars. Our surrounding counties are almost four.